I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order here in Millville, Massachusetts on Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone just want to do first and last name for the new people. Roland will start with you.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Bremmelt.
Andrew Allard.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Matthew Mealy.
Okay. So we're going to be going to executive session to start. So I will make a motion and move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law, C 30A, Section 21A4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye.
Aye.
Andrew is aye. Okay. All right. So talk amongst yourselves. Okay. So now we'll move through the rest of the agenda. So new business, 3A, consideration of appointment of Stephen Lacava to rank of Sergeant and reappoint as full-time police officer at that rank through 6/30/2024. So Chief Coop and Officer Lacava, do you want to come to the table, please? For the tough interrogation.
5A.
I think you can handle it.
Oh, okay, yep. Sorry, 5A. Thank you. I was looking at the old one. Okay. Chief Coop, over to you.
Thank you. Board, Steve Lacava, he's been with Millville Police for over five years now, in part in full-time positions. Steve, subsequently while he was here, he completed the Bridge Academy and he applied to the department for this position of full-time sergeant. Steve was a sergeant for many years, responsible for leadership of a security and a police team, and handled payroll issues and different other administrative functions over there. As the Bridge Academy started to roll out in 2020, Steve and other officers were certainly excited to put their experience and training to this new program and you got a certification out of it. Other officers left Millville before their bridge was fully completed, but Steve stuck around and he stepped up to the challenge. He's been very helpful. And that challenge was for a lot of unpaid duties as well. Currently, he handles the scheduling. He's well-versed in Caliber and Lexus Nexus, which is our records management and accident reporting system. And he fixes many problems on this by remote control when the guys call, really a whiz with the computer systems. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that my entire team has been stepping up to this challenge that we're in right now, so clearly. For the last five years, Steve, informal leader, to say the least. I mean, the guys call him, they trust him, and Steve knows a right decision, keeps me out of trouble on a daily basis. So with that being said, I would respectfully request that I can get him appointed to the rank of Sergeant.
Okay. You have any questions? Yeah, I read it, and since he's already been on the police force, so.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Stephen Lacava to the rank of Sergeant and as a full-time police officer through 6/30/2024.
Thank you, Andrew. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. He sits on the other side of the table in the union negotiations. He's a little tough.
Thank you.
And so next we have consideration of appointment of Corey, I don't know if I always say this right, Giggery?
Jigir.
Jigir.
Jigir?
Yeah.
Okay, as full-time police officer through 6/30/24. So is Corey here? Yep. Do you want to come up to the table, please?
Corey's locally born and raised in the local area. He's a Blackstone kid, growing up, graduated from BMR, moved on to UMass, played some sports, different things. He sent himself to the full-time academy, landed a job in Stirbridge, and we have an opportunity now to bring him on here as a highly-trained police officer, get him back into the area. And he had various trainings, very productive officer over there, and would be a welcome, a welcome officer that's well-trained to our staff here. I'll give Corey the opportunity, but I would respectfully request that he could be appointed to the Millville Police Department as a full-time officer.
Okay. So Corey, since this is your first time in front of us, do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the role?
Sure. I grew up in Blackstone, like Chief Coop had already said, graduated in 2015. After that, I did a lot of dead-end jobs because I knew I wanted to be a police officer, but putting yourself through took a long time. I went on a long wait list. So I finally got in 2020, and I graduated in 2020. I paid for it all myself, put myself through, didn't get paid throughout the academy like other cadets would that was already working for the department. I graduated in July 2020. I became police officer in Stirbridge, and I was a Stirbridge police officer from July 2020 until February of this year. So that's where I'm at right now.
All right. Any other questions for Corey?
None.
All right. Looking for a motion? Okay, I will, I'm going to butcher your last name. How do you say your last name, Corey?
Jigir.
Jigir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I will make a motion to appoint Corey Jigir as a full-time police officer through June 30th, 2024. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. And then consideration of appointment of Mark Morris as a part-time police officer. Is Mark here?
He is.
Yep. Can you come up to the table, please, Mark?
So Mark has most recently applied to the Millville Police Department, and he is a Bridge Academy graduate. He's currently a dispatcher for the Somerset Police Department. And in many conversations I've had with him, he's community-oriented and excited to police the community. His words from the other side of the radio. Mark has been taking care of his pre-hire items as we approach his potential appointment. He would be an excellent candidate for the police department. He has no bad habits. We'll just get out there, start training him, and get him working with the guys. I would respectfully request that Mark be appointed as a part-time police officer for the town.
Okay, great. Mark, since this is your first time in front of us, you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want the role?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for the time for all of you this evening. I always had a passion for law enforcement. I've been dispatching, it's going to be 17 years, and also six years as a part-time officer in Somerset. I love to give back to my community and help people out in any way I can. And in Millville, you know, it's a nice community where you will be more to know the public and to work on them. I'm also an advisor with the Police Explorer Post, so to getting the young back into the law enforcement, especially today, you know, to just show them everything I can. And I'm proud that two of them actually text me recently and said, "Thank you. If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be an officer." They are getting appointed.
Oh, cool.
So it really makes-
It's very rewarding.
Really, yeah. So I trained them since they were like 14 to 20. So I have also criminal justice degree, and I also went to the Bridge Academy, and I graduated, which was challenging and working.
Yeah, while working.
While full-time working, not taking time off.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark?
Whereabouts are you commuting from?
Rahulbeth.
Rahulbeth, okay.
Not too bad.
No, it's like 40 minutes?
Forty minutes, yeah.
So I'm from down that way, so Inverhaven.
Okay, yes.
Me too.
All right.
All right. Any other questions for Mark? Looking for a motion?
So I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Morris as part-time police officer through June 30th, 2024.
Thank you, Andrew. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Town administrator to send a town council approved email. To the appropriate parties regarding National Night Out. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, any further discussion? Seeing now our call for the vote, Roland.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Aye, Matthew.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and now, just to kind of, okay, so I think that's a National Night Out. And then I want to talk a little bit about policy on town events discussion. So I think we need to make sure that for any town events. That whoever is involved has been vetted by the town administrator or appointed by us. I think that helps alleviate confusion and keeps lanes clear and things like that, okay.
Absolutely.
Alright, so I will make a motion, so I'm gonna make two separate motions, so first. Um, I'll make a motion that any former employee in order to act on behalf of the town as it pertains to leading, organizing, or planning an event. Requires authorization from the town administrator or appointment by the Board of Selectmen. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
So, one quick question, just for clarity sake. Does this mean that the town administrator could authorize a person? To say do a parade or something like that without our knowledge or approval?
You, you still have a policy, your B O S policies and procedures. So, in a parade situation, you have a form for that.
Yeah.
I think frankly, I don't wanna be misjudging, uh, you know, vetting and misjudging something. So to the extent that I have a question, I would uh bring it to you all for your approval. But I, I don't, I, you know, I, so I don't know what other circumstances there could be.
Well, like.
Cause I said town administrator or us, so do you want me like amend it and say they need to be appointed by us only?
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking like, cause, I mean, not that I would be against it per se, but at the same time, I don't know how I'd feel about it, like if.
You don't wanna show up and be like, hey, who organized this big event?
Basically, like, like, we come to a meeting and we're like, oh, we have this parade that was organized by, you know, and that. You know, Peter okayed all these people to do it, and then we're, you know, like, we didn't really have any, no knowledge or say in it.
Okay, so I will amend my motion. Um, that requires a appointment by the Board of Selectmen and informing the town administrator.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second that.
You, okay, thank you.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing now our call for the vote, Roland.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Aye, Matthew.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so that was, I want to make sure we did these separate, so for former employees, and then, um, also. I will make a motion for any party to be involved in the planning, organization, or leading of a town event requires authorization. Inform, so I was saying, informing the town administrator and appointment by the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Got that one right the first time. Any further discussion? Seeing now our call for the vote, Roland.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Aye, Matthew.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Alright. Chief Cooper out of the hot seat. Um, if you wanna talk about M E S water, you can certainly welcome to stay. We're also gonna be talking about year-end transfers and then. Selectment reports and public.
Don't have any problems when any of those happen.
So you're more than welcome to stay, but if you wanna leave, we understand.
I have a couple things I can do.
That's all, I'm sure you have a couple things to do. Alright, um, M E S water, if you were Dr. DeFalco, Aaron, you wanna, you wanna come to the table or you wanna sit there?
They're observing, I think.
Okay, okay. Um, alright, so the first thing is the um N W S I invoice payment warrant. So there is many copies of this, I think they all say the same dollar amount, fourteen thousand.
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's really the invoices at the very end.
Yeah.
So it's a cover sheet and the invoice at the, at the very end.
Okay. Fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. Looks like no one's interested in M E S water, but select few. Um, okay, so. I know in our agreement that we talk about this being an operational expense because it falls under the twenty-five thousand dollars. I think others might say it's the responsibility of the. I don't know, landlord, I guess, to provide water. So. My thinking here is. I would go one of two ways, and the first is we could split it to kind of make everyone equally unhappy. Or in the second would be for us to pay it in full, so that's kind of where I'm at. Because I feel like we should be providing. Water.
So, the reason that's in front of you, you recall, I think, you know, Roland and Matthew were on the board when I. Basically drew a line in the sand on the, how I can approve these or not. I approve the town's warrants for payment.
Yep.
Of everything under your bylaws.
Right.
But I pulled back on these, uh, unless, and I have no skin in the game, but unless and until. Uh, the agreement, there's some separate agreement or your authority. Uh, provides for payment, this is uh under the black and white of the agreements. As I read them, as town council reads them, these are, this would be an operating cost. We do get invoices separately for the operations of the, the, the treatment. You know, the filtration, the treatment, the monitoring.
Yep.
And the testing of the water, which this is not, this is for the work that was done to replace the green sand filter, so it's a specific project.
Yep.
Without affirmation, past practice on some of these. I say without affirmation of the appropriateness by B M R leadership. Uh, in the form of then Matt Aronworth as the Assistant Superintendent Business Guy. There were special projects like replacement of piping and uh pump and so forth. And those were put to, to B M R and they were paid by B M R, but not. Saying that they were agreeing to the obligation, if you will, so there's past practice on this.
Yep.
But again, you know, and it leads to item, uh, four. Uh, two, four, if you will, clarification of cost burden of operating cost, so what, what I've been trying to push forward was. The parties, our friends here from B M R and the Board of Selectmen getting on the same page. In some manner so that I can act appropriately, but as it is right now, I don't feel I have the authority to approve this. So either you approve it or something else has to happen.
Mm-hmm.
And we had this situation with the first, um, uh, bulk water that was provided back in. February or January, whatever it was, before your time on the board. So that's, that's where this is at, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, no problem.
It's alright.
Of course.
Yeah.
Our pay.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Okay. So I will make a motion to authorize payment of the invoice for fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Yes, Andrew, please.
Uh, where will this be, this will be coming from?
We do have M E S water in the budget, we have like sixty or seventy thousand.
Well, it'll go over the budget, so then we'll have year, either year-end transfers or you, you could have it coming from ARPA. But I'm asking you to, tonight to table the ARPA discussion until next meeting where we have more information. So, it, it's just gonna take away from some of those larger items that were committed, but not obligated yet for ARPA funding.
So, we'd be paying out of prior, current fiscal years, um, budget, which would be going over.
Yes. So you'll have year-end transfers at the next Selectmen's meeting, and that would include this sort of thing, yep.
Overall, do we know where we are at with the, uh, end of your transfers?
No, but we know that we're gonna have, no, we won't know that till next week, so we have a rough idea. That we, the items that we know, the departments that we know are gonna be over, will need some transfers, the amounts are yet to be determined. So, for example, fuel.
Fourteen thousand, you think we'll?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we have a large amount of, um, money sitting in the Tribe County. Uh, budget, because there hasn't been any students, that we budgeted for three and there are none gone.
So the budget will be able to cover itself, basically.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing now and call for the vote, Roland.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Aye, Matthew.
Aye.
Okay. Alright.
So I might have you.
Want me to sign it?
Yep. Just to be consistent.
Okay, and then update on current plans, so. This we talked about at the May sixteenth meeting. Great detail. So I think we have our short-term plan where we allocated the fifteen thousand dollars for water and deliveries, so. Um, and just to be clear on payment of that, so our auditor, I believe. Or accountant, someone has recommended that the school pays it and then we'll reimburse, and we need to do it that way. Cause the accountant said so, and if lawyers or accountants tell me to do things, I, I do them.
Do we get something, some feedback from D E P that had to come from you?
No, your mo-, and your motion was very clear, so you either would change your motion tonight, but your motion was to reimburse B M R. Fifteen grand for the bulk water.
Yeah.
And the procedure. That we've done with ARPA payments in the past, with, with school districts has been to get invoiced by them, and so that's what we're asking.
Yeah.
So what happened though is the water that we ordered. Came in the truck and they would not deliver it because the order had to come from you, so all that paperwork had to be changed. Doctor Gillick had to re, resubmit it, so what I'm saying is how, how are we going to pay?
We, we, we didn't order the water, so I think that's a miss. D E P required a submittal of a plan that the operator had to follow. But the actual ordering of the water was by the customer. At, at the advice of that Mary Jude Pigsley.
Yeah.
Um, whether it was needed or not frankly, and that's a separate issue, but, um, so anyway.
And I believe our auditor advised us on this.
So I, I questioned the auditor, they, you know, Jay, Dr. DeFalco had a different approach he wanted to do, and he mentioned the auditor. So I checked with the auditor, and he came back with affirmation of the, of the process that I just described, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure, of course.
Why? Like, why? Why wouldn't you just pay?
Because we didn't.
I don't understand the why behind it.
I don't, so I don't either, but when the auditor says to do things, I just do it that way.
But I think we have the same auditor, and he recommends to us constantly. That we do, that we do not reimburse us, he says it to us all the time.
I think you've seen the emails, but.
Oh, I'm not discrediting what, what you're saying, Peter, I don't want you to feel that way, I'm just saying, like, he tells us in our audit finding.
And it also goes to, you, you're the customer who opted to go with the bulk water versus the town opting to go with the bulk water. The town had to give D E P through its operator certain steps of procedure. We didn't engage the bulk water, we didn't order the water, you guys did, so that, it's just that, you know, who's who, and it's. That's part of why we wanna get to clarification of the, of operating costs at some point that we talked about months ago. When this first came up, and yep, gotten it.
So I guess if there's, um, let's see, what should we do to make sure this is clear, maybe, who's the auditor?
Bob Brown.
Okay.
Robert Brown.
Robert Brown, alright, so.
And I have the email on that, so.
Okay, let's maybe put all of us on the email and be like, what do we do?
Yeah.
And, okay.
Can we ask them what the drawback would be for you, but, just paying for it yourself?
Yeah.
Like, I'm just wondering what the issue is with that, cause it's not our water system, it's the town's water, and the D E P made that very clear.
Right, but you ordered the water, whether, and. Well, I won't get into that.
We'll get clarification, we'll get clarification, put all of us on the same email.
Email screen, you'll see it.
Okay, and I will follow up with him and be like, this is what we think we should do. Here are the options, which do you recommend?
And it was your motion was reimburse B M R up to fifteen K. I don't know how they're tracking on the cost and the volume of water you get, you might exceed that.
Five deliveries.
Yeah, so.
So we can, yeah, we'll figure it out, okay.
So you might follow, you'll be able to.
I think we're gonna just make.
Just make it?
Yeah, I do, I think we're gonna be close.
Versus be over a little bit?
Yeah.
I was worried, cause it looked like you're getting a lot of deliveries.
That's great, that's good. Alright, okay, and then the intermediate plan is to switch to permanganate. Per Dr. Gullik's recommendation, and then.
Yes, so, uh, and that process requires a, uh, corrective action plan. A revised corrective action plan from S D P that the town provides. Gullik writes that up, he wrote the last one, he's editing it to include the permanganate. We're waiting on Mister Ferrari, who had a difference of opinion on exactly what to do previously. And since, hopefully he's come around, so we're, we're waiting on N W S I. Because as the operator, they submit the actual application form, which is a. N S thirty-four or something like that, and, uh, so, anyway, so that's part of the permanganate thing. But that's the intermediate thing, separately, it's my understanding, talking to Rich today, that when they get to the end of the school year. The bulk water delivery stops, but the system has to restart. And to do that, N W S I has to submit something separate to M S D P, I'm not sure what it is, but I'll be learning more from Dr. Gullik tomorrow.
We're gonna be like a water expert.
No, and I don't wanna be, thank you very much, as much as I had that. And so then separately, i- in the corrective action plan is the long-term thing, which will be kind of broadly worded. So we're not committed, because we don't know what reality turns out to be, but the objective is to seek. It value, it's evaluate bringing water from another municipal water supply. And o- obtain funding for that, ideally through the D E B grant, where we're on the top of, high up on the list, according to Miss. Mary Jude Pigsley, but in the interim, we're looking to explore, and we have a conversation with, uh, Senator Fatman's office. His, his chief operating officer guy, Keith, Chris, uh, Keith, I'll just use Keith. Next week, no, this week, Wednesday. About finding the, you know, some way to get the S R F loan, and whether the town has capacity or desire to get a loan. We don't know, but ideally, it won't be needed if the grant gets through, and it's sufficient enough to cover what the reality of a cost would be. To bring water, which could entail, you know, bedrock as you get, if it's from Blackstone, if they have capacity. And you're bringing it to the school, and you're just keeping it simple to bring it to the school, or you're allowing it to go elsewhere. All that is yet to be determined. So, it has to be broadly worded to satisfy D E P that we're moving in that direction, or at least exploring that direction. But not committing to it, cause you don't wanna commit if you don't have the money and you don't know what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
Do we have any updates about, like, timetable for the grant or anything like that, no?
October, she said, I thought she said when we spoke with her, um, the grant would be opening in October. And we'd have to apply, and then S R F is opening in August.
Yeah, it's coming up, yeah.
So, and I did, um, email, um, Ryan Chamberlain, who's the Chair in Blackstone, I don't get her back yet, so I might reply again. But I also, um, am friendly with another member of the Boris Select, not friend, acquaintance, we. Talk about our similar experiences, and so. I just sent her a message too, to say, we start, we should probably start talking about this sooner rather than later. So that we can have everything kind of lined up one way or the other, so.
My concern is the fact that the long-term plan isn't very, does not seem like it would be sustainable for the town financially.
What do you mean?
The cost to put it in would be presumably mostly covered by grants.
Yep.
We'll say that, but how do we upkeep it?
When, I don't.
Well, if a pipe starts breaking down or something happens or whatever.
Okay.
What do we do? We, we don't have the money for that.
Well, we have stabilization accounts with money in them, so we'd, maybe it would, maybe we would set, create a new stabilization account. And put a hundred thousand dollars in it from our general stabilization and mark that for water repairs.
But the, the money we spend on treating the water now.
Goes away.
Goes away.
Yeah.
So then it's just maintenance on a line, if it.
Yep.
If needed. Doesn't, because we still have to pay them for the water.
Well, we're gonna pay, right, but it's not gonna cost what the maintenance costs, no.
Yeah, but we're not gonna get too much back, and then we're gonna have to maintain a pipe with stabilization that, from this year, does not look like it's gonna be. Growing or being able to be replenished in any time in the near future. So that's why I'm saying is, it, it doesn't seem like a way for us to even consider.
So what would you, so what, what do you prefer as the long-term solution?
Well.
You have to have water at school.
Yes, so, I mean, the other point I would also mention about this long-term solution though, is also the fact that. Prior inter-municipal agreements have never gone our way, I don't think there's one that has actually worked for us very well. The other thing is that I think that as a long-term bulk water would probably be easier, because with the E P A increasing its, um, regulations on. You know, pollutants, yeah, and all that, those will be increasing, which right now, Blackstone's not available, and is needing to up its own.
Update their own system?
Yeah, which will, they'll probably transfer some of that cost, I'm assuming, to us if we're gonna be using their water. And how do we know when that happens again, if that happens again, what that might change?
So, the, like, when I first got to Millville, I had to do a corrective action plan, and they wanted short-term, long-term. You know, intermediate, all that stuff, this is somewhat similar, but it's better written because Rich has written it, okay? And he knows what he's talking about, where I didn't, and I still don't, okay, on many things. But that's why I say it's gonna be broadly worded, so that we're not committed to anything. It's really more exploring, identifying, you know, I don't know what the right words are exactly yet, but it's really. We're not committing to anything. But we're gonna see, we're gonna try to get on the S R F list, but we're not signing up on any note agreements or anything, right? And we're hopeful that we'll get the, some grant thing, but we don't know what the amount of the actual cost would be. If it's available, but, let's just use Blackstone and, as the simplest, right, because it's closest, I, I would argue. We don't know if they have capacity, um, you know, and the, and the other long-term play in this whole conversation is. What the school's gonna wind up doing on facilities, and so, you know, five years from now. Be, the M E S might come back to the town and not be needed for school, and so then, that, that's something that you, you, you gotta think about. When decisions ultimately have to really be made, and one could say, well, yeah, but the building's gonna be a public water supply, no matter what you do. With it, whether you're leasing it out to U Mass, you know, Millville, or some other thing. So there's all this stuff floating in the air, I, I don't know about, you know, piping maintenance, whether that's a big.
I mean, we can look at our fire hydrants, that's a nice cost. Which is gonna be continuing for us, a- a- along with all our other capital expenditures, like roads, increasing to the budgets. The problem with, uh, staffing, with over-budgeting on certain, with departments running over.
Yeah.
I just, I don't see how that makes any sense to do, because, I mean, granted, I don't have any numbers, but I'm assuming it's not gonna be cheap. Cause when we were talking about it, just to do one street, it was what, over a couple million? So, we don't have that, that, so, my thing is, is why bother thinking about a solution that's, we can't maintain? We couldn't even hope to maintain.
I think that'll be part of the research, so I think that we should, I think we should look at that option, and then, you know, maybe we will decide to go with bulk water. But I think that.
Do we have any ball, ballpark numbers of what these projects may cost?
So.
I heard a million dollars a mile, assuming no bedrock. And you have to maybe throw in a pump, and so next year, three million.
It's one point three miles away, I drove it.
Assuming there's no bedrock, which.
Assuming there's no bedrock.
Which probably is.
Probably there is.
Pretty sure there is, yeah.
And then the pump is like half a million, I think we came up with just all the infrastructure on our side. Like, two point two million would cover the first go.
Yeah.
Um, and then, and that's rough and tough numbers, so it could be a little bit more, it could be a little less. And then the other thing that we would need to consider is, like, what the, co- like, what's the cost every month for water?
We, we have an idea how many gallons a day we use.
Yeah.
Already.
Right, seven hundreds?
Present that to the town of Blackstone, D P W, and say, what's, what's?
Thousand gallons a day, okay.
Thousand a day, so then Blackstone's gonna tell us what that's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then. Yeah.
I just, I don't see it being viable, I mean, we have a lot of projects, I mean, the town hall is one issue, we also have the police department, which may be rolled into that. We also have the fire department and the library. We have a ton of capital projects, which we are already running behind on, at best, and adding another.
What's the library?
Huh?
The library project.
They, they wanted to, they need to be, uh, remodeled, don't they? Thought that was a thing that was gonna be.
They got painted, and that was.
No, no, wasn't the building, though, it's getting older, and they were saying how they had problems.
No, I haven't really heard that on Capitol.
I thought that was a thing at one point, that they, they were looking to eventually, not like right now, but like.
Yeah.
In the near future, that was gonna be a thing, but, um, I just, I don't.
Well, the perk with the water line is you, you get a chance to kind of develop part of that town that's running through, right? Depending on how you run it and where you run it, so that might offer additional tax revenue if we can help our business district. If we can get it kind of closer that way.
I don't know, like, I don't think it would run, maybe a little bit, but not most of it, and that would also increase the costs to try to run it down into our business district.
It would.
I don't think we really have enough information to make this decision one way or the other.
Oh, you can't, yeah, we could talk about it now, but.
I don't, yeah.
Yes, Aaron.
But you did make a motion to appropriate money to.
Research it.
To research all of what is being talked about.
Yeah.
Some of us.
So.
I have Andrew willing, no problem.
But it is, but that money, that motion was approved, so, I think it's all good questions, and it's definitely things that you need, need answers to.
Yeah.
Yep.
I won't vote on something that's not researched.
Yeah, in- instead of assuming, like, it's too much that the town can't handle, why are we even gonna do this? Um, there are ways to, I mean, you're talking about worrying about a water pipe that should be good for. Decades before there's actually a, a financial upkeep to it, but there are ways to appropriate money, to, money to that. I mean, once it's finished and installed, it could be a dollar per quarter to our homeowners. That is going into just a direct fund, I mean, there, there are ways that you would make sure the money was there for the upkeep of that. But it's not going to be an immediate expense to.
Correct, but we're already decades behind on our repairs.
Right, so you.
So, we're already running behind the schedule, so adding more just into the future is just kicking the can down the road and saying, oh, well, we won't have to think about it now. I mean, it's gonna be a problem, and we don't have the possibility to fund it at this point, that's, that's where I'm looking at.
I think funding bulk water on a regular basis could also be a huge burden.
Well, piping under the roads, as long as it's installed right, last, last a long time.
Right.
I've been on projects in the city of Boston that were replacing pipes under the road that were installed in the late eighteen hundreds. And they're made out of wood. Like a beer cake.
You know what, we can do wooden tar.
If you go to the Milford Water Department, they have a sample of one that was in Milford, right on the, in the front door. Made out of wood, just the same way they make a beer cake, and back.
I'm buying a sawmill, I'm going into the pipeline business.
There's some pipes that are out there for a hundred years that still aren't weakened, and.
Right.
But as long as it's installed correctly.
Yeah.
We're not earthquake. Not on wood.
Yeah.
Territory like other parts of the country, that's, that's a big factor there, but we're, we're not in that area.
I think we can move on, we just don't have enough information to say one way or the other, and I think, but Andrew, you bring up a good point, I think we would look at all these, like, this is what a pipeline would be. This would be if we wanted to update the water system and maintain it forever, and so it'd be pipeline. Update the system and then bulk water, and we look at those three. Okay, so moving on, um, is that okay if I move on?
I just have one, so, going back to intermediate, cause I remember in the, I don't know if it was the.
May sixteenth?
May sixteenth, fifteenth, or the, uh, April school committee meeting, where, uh, Mister Ferrari expressed concerns if we switched to. Permanagate, uh, if he would like leave, I remember there was something that he would like to consider leave. Have we had any further communication since the May sixteen?
Well, they've been doing what they need to do for the bulk water supply, they've been responsive, they, they, but he has been a, well. He's, he's not as responsive to the. he's, he's not as responsive to the, the, the need to file the application to Mass DEP to do the switch to permanganate. So, we hope to see resolution on that this week because there's a, there's a scientist and an engineer, they have different approaches. But the engineer's approach also was based on some different view of the facts, how's that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I, I know if going in the future, say, he leaves and he's been with, you know, I mean, that's for twenty years.
Yeah, so that, we haven't, we, he has not submitted a resignation.
Okay.
And determination would be put forth to you should that be, uh, needed in that manner.
Yeah, I just wanted to update, see if someone's going for that.
So we're trying to.
Trying to get some.
Get them to a happy place.
Yeah.
How's that?
That's, that sounds good.
So Jennifer, can I just add one thing about that system? I, I do think for us, the timeline for that is the summer.
Yes.
So, and I think we left May sixteenth all feeling that way.
Yes.
Just so we know the kids are going back in with that new.
Yes.
So he has two things he's gotta do, is get your water turned on again for the summer so toilets can flush, because you'll have water in the toilets. And the, the media that was replaced that these guys just approved tonight is kept useful and active and doesn't die on the vine, if you will, right? So there's that, and then the switch to the permanganate, which is really not a, it's not a capital cost, it's more some widgets to dispense a different chemical, which eliminates the disinfectant byproduct issue that's been plaguing the school for years now, right?
Is that the corrective action plan?
That's probably the corrective.
To be approved by DEP before that starts?
So, yes, and, and separately an application, which I got it written down somewhere, it's a, you know, a specific form that the operator has to submit to DP for this changeover. So there's a corrective action plan and the submission of the form, and then he's gotta get the stuff.
Yep, so I think by, for the June twentieth meeting, we want to hear that paperwork is in order to move forward.
Correct, otherwise we have to go to Plan B.
And so that we can, because I, I think we all, just to restate it, like, we all expect the permanganate to be completed for the start of school in September or August, whenever the first day is. So that's our expectation as well.
Is there a Plan B?
I don't know.
If not, we're going to Plan B.
So Plan, so, well, we will have Plan B if we need it.
Well, no, so then, so then you're just, you're not switched to permanganate, you're using the system as it is, which is the chlorine treatment.
Well, that's why we have the bulk water right now.
I, I, I know, but hopefully you'll.
The Plan B, I guess, is bulk water.
But your, your DBPs have been testing fine, from what I understand.
With bulk?
No, prior, just prior to the bulk. So you, you, they've made, you know, the recent tests show no DBPs and good job on the iron and manganese. Okay, just before switching to the bulk. So you, you.